Good evening, I think we're all here so I think we should just get started. Depends on which memo you got whether we're starting early or late. But I apologize for the mix up in the time but thank you all for being here tonight. As you know, we're here as required by our charter. But before we do that, I would officially call to order the joint meeting of the city council and the school committee meeting for the purpose of November 28th. And I'll read the purpose after so I'm going to ask Paul to read the role.
Council Cameron?
Here.
Mr. Cole? Council Connell? Council Cronin? Mr. Decanter?
Here.
Council Devlin?
Present.
Council Earls?
Present.
Council Argamond? Council Chunta?
Present.
Mr. Hottiger?
Here.
Mr. Menne? Mr. Reardon?
Here.
Ms. Sweeney?
Present.
Council Tonkak?
Here.
Council Vogel?
Present.
Council Zee?
Present.
Council O'Brien?
Here.
Mayor Holliday?
Present. Thank you, we have a quorum of both forums.
The purpose of this meeting today... All right, which one? Ah, there we go. Is set by our city charter, section 6.2 Annual Budget Meeting. The mayor shall call a joint meeting of the city council and school committee to include the superintendent of schools before the commencement of the annual budget process to review the financial condition of the city revenue and expenditure forecast and other relevant information prepared by the mayor in order to develop a coordinated budget. So I know many of you have been through this process before. I'm going to call Ethan Manning, our finance director and auditor up to begin the presentation and then at some point he will call Nancy Lysek and potentially Susan to come up, Bakaro to come up and take over to present the school budget. And then Ethan will close out the meeting and will end with questions. So thank you all for being here. Ethan?
Good evening. You may recognize some of these slides from years past. I thought it was important to still touch on them given, you know, some of the new members who I welcome here tonight, looking forward to working with you. So the budget process pretty much starts right away in August through December with preliminary planning, looking at our capital improvement needs, if there's any additional funding for supplemental budgets. Those would typically be submitted around this time. There were none this year. Free cash and retained earnings get certified. The tax rate is set, which it was last night. And then tax bills by law are sent out by December 31st. Moving into January is when the process really gets underway. The mayor is meeting with her department heads to present the development guidelines and packets are sent out to department heads which are due back usually around February. And then the mayor is meeting with her department heads to review those needs and formulate a budget proposal. By charter, the capital improvement program is submitted to the city council by April 1st. During this time, the school committee will adopt their budget. And then shortly thereafter, the mayor's proposed budget is submitted to the city council by May 15th at the latest, after which the council has 40 days to approve, and that's mass general law. And it would typically be before June 30th, which is the end of the city's fiscal year, which starts all over again July 1st. I'll turn it over to Susan to go through the school budget. Sure.
In December, we take a look at what our special education transitional needs are going to be across this, make a look at those, I mean individually with all of the leadership and leader fifteen. And we begin the process, working together as a team and looking at what our priorities are going to be. And then from January to April, April, we really refine what the budget's going to look like. We present it to the mayor unless it's approved by the school committee.
So a main part of this meeting is for the mayor's administration to give the school committee and a city council an update on the city's financial condition to kind of start the FY19 budget process. I included this chart last year. And I didn't think I'd include it again this year, but it's interesting. This was published by the National League of Cities in their annual city fiscal conditions You see the line here. Cities and towns are still not 100% recovered from the 2007 recession. And I think in this report, which I'd recommend reading, I'll post it on our website, they do raise a lot of, you know, red flags about, you know, where the economy might be going, emphasizing conservative budgeting, et cetera. But they say, "Given other indicators of fiscal challenge in the municipal sector, it is possible that revenues may not return to pre-recession levels during this economic cycle." So again, that was US as a whole. Looking at Newburyport's recovery from 2007, I think it's interesting mostly to look at the red line, which are the local receipts. So those are revenue that we're taking in basically besides taxes. So besides FY09 and FY10, those have pretty much kept right up with taxes going back to the FY07 recession. And of course, down at the bottom in green, you have our state aid, which is only at 80% of where we were back in 2006 before the recession.
Ethan, these are raw numbers.
Yes. Yep.
Percentage is based on raw numbers, not based on inflation.
That's right. We like to look at economic growth indicators, which I consider to be the revenue sources that are closely tied to the local economy. So those would be our rooms tax, our meals tax, new growth to the tax levy from new developments or additions, and then also licenses and permits in motor vehicle excise. You can see over the past five years that this is increasingly becoming a larger part of the city budget, going from 7.8% of total revenue to currently 8.5% of the revenue. And that's kind of driven by two things. You have the strengthening local revenue, and then you have the declining state aid, which is being offset by this economic growth revenue. Our reserve balances right now are healthy. Our policy target in the city's financial policies is to maintain a balance of 5 to 10% of our annual budget. Right now, for FY18, we are at 8.8% of total expenditures. Certified free cash is around just under $2.5 million. And then our stabilization trust fund, which you may hear referred to sometimes as a rainy day fund at the state level, that's around $3.1 million. So together, those make up the city's reserve balances. And of course, every year, as the denominator goes up, you're needing to keep supplementing this to keep the targets where they should be, as we've done over the past several years. Outstanding debt. There is currently $107 million in outstanding debt across the city. Clearly, water and sewer make up a large part of this, followed by excluded debt, which I'll drill into a little bit more in the next couple slides. And then the actual debt within the tax levy is 3%, which is, you know, fairly modest. And for general fund debt service, we're typically looking to keep this policy target below 10% of annual expenditures. Right now, we're actually at 6.3%, which is, you know, a pretty good ratio as far as the credit rating agencies go. So this is a look at general fund debt within the tax levy. So this is within the confines of Proposition 2.5. You can see, we actually have quite a bit rolling off in FY18 and FY19, after which we'll pretty much be left with just the newer debt being the fire trucks, the city portion of the stadium project, a firehouse bond, which is the pass-through because they pay us back for that, and then the drainage bond. Looking at the excluded debt, so these are exclusions that are voted at a referendum. These are a little bit further out, as you can see, by the big blob of purple. We're not really seeing much relief here until the library starts to come off in FY20 and then the high school in '23 and '25. And then after that, it's pretty much a hodgepodge of the NOC in the Brezhnev hand and then I want to quickly touch on our unfunded liabilities, which basically for the city are pensions. So these are the benefits that any employee or retiree will get in the form of a defined benefit when they leave the city. You can see the funded ratio for Newburyport is about 61.3% compared to our peers where we're a little bit on the above-average side. Our evaluation for this is done every two years, after which point the actuaries come up with a funding schedule as to how we're going to fund this large liability. Right now, it is theoretically going to be funded by FY36, based on an increasing appropriation of 5% each year. So that's the amount in yellow. And you can see, it's a pretty daunting increase. And unfortunately, every time this funding schedule gets updated, you think you're going to make progress, but usually it's two steps back and then maybe one step forward. But I mean, this is a problem for all municipalities across Massachusetts. And then, of course, we have the OPEB, which is the Other Post-Employment Benefits. So this is the cost of the healthcare benefit that you as an employee will receive once you retire from the city. So most of this will be Medicare-based plans for those over 65, or PPO and HMO for those under 65. A new change is that this liability is now being recognized on the city's balance sheet like the unfunded pension liability is. As of last year, it was just a footnote to the financial statement, so now it's actually front and center, being captured on the balance sheet. So therefore, credit rating agencies are paying a lot more attention to the fact that municipalities are aware of their unfunded liability and are taking steps to fund it. You can see, looking at our neighbor peers, we're at about .7, kind of right in the middle. And we do have a trust fund, which we established in FY14, which currently has a net asset value of $571,000. And this, I thought, was important. I included this last year. This is our credit profile as written by Standard and Poor's. The city has a AAA bond rating. They note that Newburyport has a very strong economy, very strong management with strong financial policies, strong budgetary performance, very strong liquidity, strong debt and liability position, and strong institutional framework. I will now turn it over to Nancy and Susan to talk about the school budget.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think this is what works it?
Yep.
Okay. No, that's not what I wanted to do. Okay. Now we're in business. All right. We've gone with the new company, ClaireGov, for transparency with the school districts. So what we've asked them...
If you need my...
Oh, I'm sorry. Sure. So what we've asked them to do, as a general rule, the data is a year behind because it's unaudited. So we've asked them to take our FY17 end-of-the-year report that I completed in October and to put it through the system that DESI uses, which you'll see on the side. It's a brief explanation of what each category is. This also will include the amounts of money that the city pays on behalf of the schools, such as health insurance, liabilities and such. So that's why some of the percentages are higher for employee benefits, because it's thrown in with that. As soon as it's audited, it'll be published. We might publish it even before that, once the data can be looked at. I think it's important to get the data out there sooner rather than later. It doesn't get audited until the beginning of next year, so that's kind of late to look at FY17 data. So I think we're going to publish it on our website now with FY16, even though it's unaudited. We'll just label it as such. But this will give you an idea of how the school's money and the city's contributing to the school is spent. Revenue sources, similar to what we've done in past years. The biggest difference that you're going to be seeing now is in choice. In FY17, we budgeted $494,000. We did not use that money. We saved, as you remember, we tried to save some money last year in expenses and use our expense money rather than salary so we could build up our choice. As you can see, we expected $546,000 in revenue from choice, but we only received $200. We had a very expensive child that moved into the district, so it's no longer choice. So that's where that money gets sent back to the state. This year, we only are going to be receiving about $94,000. Next year, I expect it to be under 50. We'll only have four children left in the choice program next year. So fund balance this year, we had to use over $600,000 of our fund balance. Next year, we'll be down, if we use all of that $600,000, we'll be down to just over $500,000 remaining in choice. With no revenue coming in again, we're going to have to be very careful next year of how much we use. We can't let choice go down to zero. It's the only funds that we have for something that comes up in an emergency situation. So if we have $250,000 to budget next year, that will be it, in place of the $600,000, $700,000 that we did this year. Everything else will remain about the same. I don't anticipate a big difference in the revenue sources, but we'll be working on that next month.
For our federal and state grants, we've received a grant for our middle school for curricular materials. Our academic support program that has been cut, we get $11,000 for our early childhood special education program. Title I, we've actually gone up a little bit, $217,000. That's a lot of salary money there. We've lost the next two grants. We have improving educator quality, we have $53,000 there. $77,000 in our enhanced school health needs, that's for our nurse leader. And you can see that the next series of grants have been zeroed out. $16,000 in Title III and $5,000 in Title IV. So we're still receiving $924,000 in grants projected for FY18. And I want to emphasize the projected piece because I do think that there could be more state cuts coming in certain grant areas, so we'll have to wait and see. We did lose the special education grant. Just found out about that recently, so I expect that there'll be potential for more cuts in the grant area. Private grants. Our PTO, we just didn't get a figure on that, but the PTO is very generous, provides a lot of funding for our field trips. NEF, we don't have the figures on that yet because they run by a calendar year, but generally they are giving us very close to $300,000, if not over $300,000 a year. So we're very fortunate that we have Swayze PTO contributions. And Swayze, as you can see, there's a huge increase, and that is used exclusively for professional development for teachers. That's all it can be used for. But they have been very generous in their contributions that are projected for next year. And the total of all our grants, as you can see, is $1,001,000. And the total revenue is there at $32,273.
Total expenditures has gone up, obviously each year it goes up. What the city gives us is on there. We've done a total of all of our revolving, as well as our grants and the private grants. FY18, we anticipate to be just over $32 million. Now, these figures do not include any that the city contributes, like with health insurance, that's not part of our operating budget, it's part of this. School choice, as you can see, I've done a sheet that shows you the past years. FY18 is 94. We have eight children total in our choice program, four that will graduate this year, that will leave us with four remaining. FY19 will most likely be the last year that we have any funds in fund balance to budget with. I don't see, because we have no money coming in, and we're going to be using it all this year that we budget it for. Special education costs. FY14 through FY17 are actual figures. We've done, there's a large increase in tuition due to a student coming in. Transportation automatically goes up with, you know, out placements. Staffing had a slight increase with additional three IAs that were needed in the school system this year, for a total program cost of $8.5 million budgeted for FY18.
And we currently have 26 students placed outside of the district.
That's pretty good.
We currently have 26 students placed outside of the district, in other special education programs outside of the district.
And how does that affect this?
That's the tuition...
We're paying out.
Yes, that's the tuition that you see there.
I added this slide just to give you a brief look of how Circuit Breaker, which is our special education reimbursements, is calculated, and a few of the other districts that are in there and where we stand.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Basically, we have a certain amount of money that we file with Circuit Breaker, and it's calculated on a foundation, which has to do with the Chapter 70 calculations. So it's actually four times foundation, and then that's multiplied by the number of students that we have, and that's what's deducted from our money that we claim. And the remainder is what we get a reimbursement on. It's never 100%. We always figure it at about 60, 65. Sometimes they'll try to fund it a little higher, but that's not something we know in advance. Actually, we budgeted $550,000, it came in pretty close, so.
Let me talk a little bit about capital needs. The NOC parking lot is really in terrible shape, and this was not something that we could do as part of the building project. This is something that we see as a really, as a urgent, very high need. I'm very concerned with both the lighting and the parking lot itself. We've had people fall in the parking lot. It is very dark there, particularly this time of year, from 4 o'clock on. It's very difficult to see. There are potholes, it's crumbling. The whole infrastructure is gone, it's very dangerous. As a matter of fact, one of our school committee members actually fell in the parking lot. So I'm concerned about, from a safety aspect. And I would invite anyone who would like a tour, please come, and I would be glad to show you where the areas are, because...
Do they do that during the daytime?
That's just the parking lot lights, the upgrade that we'd like to do there. As part of the building project, again, we couldn't do this, and it's very, very dark. Elevator, this is a huge, this is a very high need. The cost estimates came in much higher than we anticipated, so we are $163,000 short right now. But this is for the NOC Mullen, and this is a mandate. This is, we have to have an elevator to be able to get our children with disabilities up and down, from the first floor to the second floor. So we were funded, the city funded us $140,000 in 2017, but our shortfall is $163,700. The roof replacement, again, we put into the state for this. We were rejected because they were doing roofs that were 30 or 35 years. We know that this is going to have to happen, we're patching it for now. We are in the queue and will reapply again.
This is a summary of the capital needs. There is a separate packet that we did so that we didn't have to go through each one. The ones that are in here, the ones that are urgent or high, the rest are medium and such. But this is a listing of all capital needs by school, Fonya.
And there's a lot. And then just priorities from my perspective, early on in the budget process, the expansion, continuing the expansion of world language, focus on safe and supportive schools, continuing the work on the strategic plan, continuing our STEM expansion, interdisciplinary courses at the high school, and then technology education. And those are the priorities. And that's it.
Okay, I'm next going to give a FY19 budget outlook and then give an update on our long-range financial projection. Looking into FY19 and beyond, right now, our most positive budget factors are, you know, clearly the value of the city's tax base growing as it is, the health of the local economy, as we talked about with our local revenue. Oil prices and costs of, you know, goods and inflation have been lower than projected, which you might view as a somewhat positive factor. As the most negative, the cost of employee and retiree benefits has become a large budget pressure for the city. Health insurance has increased on average 6.2% per year over the past five years. And our pension assessment is increasing 5% per year. Couple that with our available revenue sources, eventually, you know, you run out money if health insurance keeps going up at the rate it has over the past five years. The next one, unfunded and underfunded mandates. I know the school committee's talked about that quite a bit on the school side. There's just, you know, so much pressure there from new laws and regulations that are just tying up funds that, you know, could otherwise be going to core education. It's just like, where do you come up with this extra money? And then obviously, infrastructure needs. You know, we were talking about the streets right before this meeting. You know, it's a large, large list of needs, and sometimes it seems like you're putting money into a black hole that's just, you're never making any progress. So clearly, that's a, you know, a negative budget factor that we'll need to work through going forward. Some cost-saving measures that we've looked at over the past several years, we're still actively looking at health insurance, since that is the largest, the single largest line item in the budget, obviously besides the school budget. By going out to bid, looking at alternative plan designs, you know, just trying to come up with creative ways of structuring our health plan so that, you know, it's really sustainable in the long term. Continuing to look at energy efficiency projects, as we've done through the LED upgrade, for example, and tackling, you know, a lot of the older city buildings, just to kind of, you know, save on energy where we can. We're currently in the process of rolling out a municipal fiber network, thanks to a grant from the Commonwealth, which will replace a lot of antiquated wireless radio signals that connect a lot of the municipal buildings throughout the city, which are very outdated and costly to operate. The mayor has done a great job at reducing sick time payouts during her administration... The mayor has done a great job at reducing sick time payouts during her administration. We most recently tackled the police patrolmen and superiors and got rid of sick time for any new hires as of July first. And then lastly, continuing to look at, you know, ways we can regionalize and collaborate with other cities and towns, as we've done with the veteran services, for example, and animal control.
Can I just ask you a question?
Oh, sure.
The way you worded it, it sounds like we're not going to pay police sick time anymore.
They accrue sick time still. When they retire, they do not get a payout.
Oh, got it.
Yeah.
I was like, no, they should get sick.
Oh, yeah, no. They still get the normal, yeah.
We've been negotiating that out of every single contract.
No, that's fine. The payout...
We're looking towards, you know, the future of public service.
Okay, so our growth opportunities. That black and white little sketch there, that's the Graff road pump station, which will allow for some added capacity and new development, hopefully, which will, you know, increase the city's tax base, along with projects such as Waterfront West and David Hall's Full Side Center for Sustainability. Casinos, I made the logos small intentionally to reflect the amount of revenue that we'll get from them. I think, I think if you really, you know, blow the estimates out of the water, we're maybe getting a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in state aid. But we know how that goes.
So we're not building a casino in Newportport?
Not yet.
I'm asking for days.
No, but we had, you know, I anticipated that that, you know, one of the little carrots was that the money from the casinos would go toward schools. It was like lottery funding. You saw what happens when revenues get tight in the state, they take money and put it somewhere else. So it will be interesting to see what happens with that.
Yeah, theoretically, about twenty percent is going to local aid. The next is transportation infrastructure at fifteen percent, and then education at fourteen percent. But they can say they're going to earmark that for those purposes, but then they can use the other money and put it somewhere else. So we really don't know until we see it. Marijuana, maybe not for FY nineteen, but going out in the next few years, this could be some tax revenue for the city. The state is projecting about a hundred and fifty million dollars in tax revenue. And earlier this year, the local option for this went from two to three percent and gave municipalities the ability to extract an additional three percent through user agreements with retailers. So we're not building this into our projections for FY nineteen, but maybe at some point in the next few years, this could be a revenue source for us. Poorism, obviously, getting, continuing to attract visitors to our city is good for the economy. UFP Technologies is an example of a TIF project, tax increment financing. Continuing to look at ways to kind of promote TIF projects and get businesses here, especially to the business park, will just kind of further help our new growth and kind of keep that number going up. And then lastly, of course, you know, parking revenue, working with John Burke to make sure that we're running an optimal parking system in the downtown could generate some additional revenue as well. Okay, moving into our financial projections, we do a five-year projection. We make a lot of assumptions in this. We assume that labor and service costs go up with the index. We assume health insurance costs are going up five percent per year. We know our pension assessment is currently going up five percent per year. We assume local revenue growth in line with historicals, state aid going up fifty basis points per year. And then we assume that for the tax levy, that we're going up to the full tax levy limit for the purposes of building the budget. Our revenue projection, at the top, you have our property taxes. You add in our debt exclusion, which brings you to the maximum levy limit. You add in all of our local receipts, plus net state aid, subtracting out the reserve for abatements, which, for example, is used to pay for the senior tax work-off program and any other exemptions offered by the city, brings you to our total revenue at the end of the year. On the expenditure side, for the purposes of this projection, I want to highlight the school budget. We assume a minimum of a three point one percent increase to the city's appropriation for the school budget, which is based on historicals. For FY nineteen, we're right now projecting a three point one percent plus two hundred thousand on top of that to attempt to make up for the choice fund balance going away, which, as Nazzy said, probably won't be enough, unfortunately. Going down, you move into health insurance, our pensions, capital investments. And I highlighted and read at the bottom that at a minimum, we're hoping to invest an additional hundred thousand dollars in roads in FY nineteen, and then another hundred thousand dollars in roads in FY twenty. Hopefully, we can increase that a bit as we, you know, see what happens with the state aid numbers, see what happens with the health insurance renewal. But this is, you know, the best we can do with the numbers at this point in time, so more to come. Our capital funding plan, the dotted line there is, represents three point eight percent, which is our historical capital funding within the tax levy. So that basically comprises of, comprises appropriations from free cash, any debt service appropriations within the budget, non-excluded debt service, and then any, you know, basic capital outlay, that's a line I am in the budget, such as, you know, the two hundred and ninety thousand for sidewalks. Now, as you can see, kind of looking at that line in teal, we're pretty much, you know, right on the target there.
Ethan?
Yes?
Would you mind going back a slide?
Sure.
I just was really curious about the available balance slide. And it's just, I don't quite, could you just highlight a little bit about how it drops and then how it starts to build back up? What's the assumptions there on? See where it goes down from ten to five, then back up to sixty-one? Is that, that seems like a real drastic number there.
Yeah, so I wouldn't focus too much on the bottom line, just given all the assumptions we have. I think, I think for this size of a budget, you're getting down to, you know, rounding error within fifty thousand dollars. But I think you have a couple of things going on. You have the school budget going up more in FY nineteen and twenty. You have the capital outlay going up more in FY nineteen and twenty. So then, as we back off those significant increases, it causes the fund balance to go up slightly.
So we're just kind of too far out to really...
Exactly.
Thank you, thank you very much. Sorry to interrupt.
No worries. And then this is a look at the school appropriation, as it's been over the past ten years. So again, based on this very preliminary projection, this would be a three point nine percent increase to the school appropriation, which works out to a forty-one point five percent increase during the current administration. And that concludes the presentation.
Can I ask you a couple of questions?
Sure.
Sorry, so I just wanted to hold mine until the end. So my first question is, on slide ten, which shows Newportport's recovery since oh-seven, so from seventeen to eighteen, you know, a little bit in the state aid, was that all a reduction in the school state aid, Chapter Seventy? See the dip in the green line in the last year? Was that all, was that all schools, or what, and is that an expected trend to start heading back down in the other direction?
Yeah, you know, a lot of it had to do with the school assessments. It was charter schools. It was the sending tuition.
So is that choice? Could that be reflected in that state aid line?
No, choice is a offset, so that goes directly to the schools. But yeah, local aid went up, you know, it actually went up a little bit. But then you turn the page to the assessments, and that's really where you really get, you know, whacked by some adjustments. And this past year happened to be mostly to the charter schools.
Okay.
Do you know how much, sorry, do you know how much short the state was on funding for the charter school tuitions?
Yeah, you know, I know it's, you know, underfunded. I don't know how much they were underfunded.
So on slide fourteen, I just have one question. So the drainage bomb shown for FY thirty-seven, is that the one that we passed last year?
Yes, so we've currently issued about half of it. There's another four hundred and thirty-five thousand to go. Yep.
Okay. Next question's on slide eighteen. The GAZV seventy-five, is that, are the rating agencies going to basically just change their whole methodology, since this is going to hit everybody at the same time? So it's not expected to be monumental for us individually, because everybody's going to all of a sudden have a huge liability on their balance sheet that never existed before?
Exactly. I don't work, I don't think we'll see a mass downgrade of every municipality because of this. I think everyone knows it's coming. They've been seeing the number in the footnotes. It's just basically being moved to page one. So I don't, I don't see it being a major impact, at least right now.
All right, just a couple more. On the next, the school slides are not numbered, but once you get into the revenue sources, I just want to understand, to make sure I understand this choice number. So the ninety-four thousand dollars that you're showing here, is that the expected net choice, meaning receiving minus sending? Is that the profit sent from the choice program? Or is that only the inflow? In other words, one of my biggest concerns has been, if you went from taking in a net of, say, five hundred thousand dollars, net being, you know, what you receive minus what you send, so it's a profit in a sense, if all, if all the receiving goes away, now you have a loss effectively. So the swing is actually bigger than going from, say, it's five hundred to zero, it could actually go from five hundred to, say, negative two fifty, because now you've got to keep sending. So I just want to see, how is that accounting done, and how bad is the swing, basically? If that makes any sense. I can try again if it doesn't, if I didn't explain it well.
Yeah, what you're saying, ninety-four thousand dollars that you see up there is revenue for the number of children that come to Newport that we receive, the school receives directly from the state. The spending choice that the city has to pay, I believe, comes right off of your Chapter Seventy money. So we don't see that loss.
Got it.
That comes off of Chapter Seventy.
So this ninety-four may be go down to zero, but eventually, or when the last few students are...
Will receive no more funds, but the city will continue to have deduction for choice sending on their Chapter Seventy.
You have three children in second grade.
Yeah.
So they'll be with us for a while. How many students choose out of Newport?
You know, I don't know the actual figure. I can get it by...
But that's not including the out-of-district special education, just general education students who'd say, I want to go to Pride and Newport.
Yeah.
I would say I never even thought about that.
And also, any of our students who attend Massachusetts online school, we pay a choice tuition for that online school.
Seriously?
Who do you have? At TACCA?
Yeah.
We have two at the beginning of the year, and I think they both have not been successful there, so we've taken all three choices.
And students who are home schooled?
Home schooled, we do not, we don't pay choice money or anything that's...
But we still are required, though, to, it's a mandatory mandate, because aren't you required to monitor?
Oh, absolutely. And I, and we have about, probably, I think, twenty-two home schools right now, and I meet with all of those families twice a year.
Do you have them separately, or as a group?
Separately, individually, and improve their plans and bring in the assessments and with their plans for the next year.
You take the whole year? You know, separate ones also?
Yes.
Well, you see the Widdier, you'll see that's up there in the revenue there for expenditures. But we only, do we still have two students at Essex or North Shore Road?
Yeah, I think it's just the two.
It's just the two.
Yeah.
Students can only go to North Shore Road Tech for agriculture, because all of the other Road Tech programs are offered at Widdier, which is where we have the direct contact with.
Yeah, so we actually just got the updated numbers for Widdier, and it's staying right around, isn't it, thirty-two students? So last year, we saw a big increase, going from four sixty-four thousand to about six forty-one. So hopefully, with the enrollment kind of stabling off, we won't see that big jump going into next year.
Do we have, I know nothing was presented here, but do we have long-term estimates on enrollment, or what is that looking like?
We are definitely, our younger grades, our preschool, kindergarten, are smaller, and we're going to see that trend go all the way through, so.
And after that, current preschool, do you anticipate lower?
I think, I do anticipate lower.
Which means they have enough school choices.
Which, exactly.
Which means...
Which is, which is one of the options that hopefully that we would take advantage of.
Didn't we discuss thirty-five kids who live in the office years?
We did. We did. So that, but it's shrinking at the lower levels, which is where we would have the room. We can open up more choice seats there.
I'm just saying, that's unexpected growth.
We average, I mean, depending, we've had some banner years. But, you know, if you, if you have, you know, fifteen kids move in, and it's a, you hit a particular grade level, that can be the difference in having to get out of the classroom. And it can go the other way as well. Sometimes we can decrease the classroom, which we've been able to do in kindergarten. But I do think that we will see increased revenue in the next five years, based on the opening, being able to open up choice seats. So we do see that happening. It's going to take a while before it can happen, which is, which is usually where a lot of people want to choose in high school.
A lot of people want?
Want to choice into high school.
Just a couple more. On the revolving funds, on the couple of slides back, I think, just refresh my memory on those. So those are like athletics and sort of those sorts of things that count, because it's a fairly substantial number, two point two million dollars on the total expenditures. One, which is the next slide after this one. Sorry, revolving. There it is, yeah. So what, can you just go pie on that two point two a little bit more? Is it primarily athletics and student fees that go into revolving funds, or what?
Yeah, all the first, to Nancy, but I think the first slide kind of gives you all of the education related revolving funds, right?
Yes, athletics, transportation, kindergarten, preschool, Circuit Breaker, they're all considered revolving funds.
So those add up to the two point two total? On the special ed numbers, so, sorry, I'm, but there's a number that was about, yeah, so eight point five million dollars. So eight point five out of, say, thirty, I'm just going to very roughly round that to a third, but just call it, just for the sake of discussion. What percentage of students are special education? I want to see how the money lines up with the number of students. Just very roughly, is it?
Yeah, thirteen to fourteen percent is what we're going to...
So fifteen percent, or taped up, taped up, let's say, or maybe that's not right, they say, account for thirty, about thirty percent, let's say.
That's correct. And that one increase from one point eight to two point five, you said that's one student?
I would get it.
The tuition.
Tuition? Hot, it's, no, but one student can cost you between three and four hundred thousand dollars.
I was just going to say, like, that's a really big jump.
It is.
And how much of that was blunted by the Circuit Breaker? Is it hard to say for one student?
Yeah, because you've got to calculate what the overall cost is to that student, and then take away the foundation.
My last question is, so on the very last slide... My last question is, so on the very last slide, Ethan, or you did this, this school or you guys did this, please, have you, do you have a number for level services? What would the increase need to be in order to keep the schools level services, not level funded, but level services? And then are we going to make any headway beyond that? Do we, I know we always hope to, but will we or do you project that we will be able to have so by any estimation?
I anticipate perhaps those figures by mid-December. Because we're working on salaries and revenues for the next few weeks, so hopefully I'll have an idea.
We really know when we get House funding budget, then we generate a governance budget. Where we get, you know, and we usually base the development of our budget for FY '19 on that budget because it's concerned. And we usually have been pretty, it's been pretty solid, we reduce that as our base. And then we've been able to provide supplemental budgets, not this year, but in the past years, when the House and the Senate have increased beyond the House budget, we've been able to take that increase and either send it to the schools. I should be seeing one year, I think three years ago, we were able to give a good chunk back to the schools and we were looking at some housing and the supplemental budget we were able to pay for. That's where we really know by the end of January.
Thank you.
Other questions?
All right, I got, I got more, I was just going to take the break. I only have a couple other ones. So can we talk about the knock capital expenditures a little bit more? So the parking lot and the lighting and the elevator. So my memory is certainly correct, because you said funded here in March. So what happened with the elevator? Was more extensive needs than what was originally anticipated or?
That's correct.
So it's a whole redo basically?
Well, it's, they came in making, making far more recommendations than they were saying that we needed to do in order to be compliant. And, you know, permission doctors.
Ethan, what's left from your school?
Oh, from the knock in the breast? It's about $970,000.
Ethan, does that include the technology? That doesn't include the technology money, does it?
Nope, that's separate.
That's separate, that's already been allocated.
And they came in with, I want to thank you, they came in with far more expensive renovations. After recent inspections, the state elevator has been determined that the control of the hydraulic oil tank would need to be replaced in the F U to do the age. Further discussions, the replacement of the piston should be considered as well. So the budget cost was, was below to replace the control of the hydraulic tank. The buttons are not a hub area in the pistons. And it also includes an allowance for engine. But the elevator, I mean, obviously in any public building, the elevator becomes...
No, it's just more after what the change was. So in this one, it says that you need 282 in FY '18, but in this one it says we funded 140 and then either one, another 163.
That's, that's correct.
So that, so they're, I mean, they're, they're close.
Yeah, but we received, we received the numbers, Nazzy gave us for spring today. Yeah, they just, they were updated today. So it was the, what you see and what you saw in each year was accurate, because the one 64 was...
I think this one included the, the engineering, and the other hand, it did not, that was the difference.
And then on the knock parking lot, I mean, I know we touched on this briefly on the council, but I guess, you know, my question is, is, is that, is that truly the highest priority? Do we think we're going to need monies to support programs in light of reducing, in light of falling school choice funds or something like that? I mean, I, I went and walked the parking lot a little bit, and I mean, it's not in great shape, of course, it's understandable, but I'm just trying to fit it into the, it's always a priority is the hardest thing to do.
I mean, why, why I say that it's a, it's a high priority is because of the fact that we have had two falls, we've had two people fall there, and it really is, when we walk out of the building at this time of year in the evening, it's really, and you add a little bit of ice or a little bit of snow, it's dangerous. And I'm worried about the school district and the city getting sued. I mean, that's just, that's, you're hearing my opinion.
Sure, no, I appreciate it, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Wasn't the estimate $400,000 when this first came before us, and that estimate proved to be like four or five years old? I thought we were getting two...
It was three years old.
So this is an updated estimate?
But there's also 75 on a separate page for the lighting.
Correct.
Which originally was thought to be included, so it's more like it's going to be a house-level project.
But it would be worth also because, you know, Tony Wayne was saying that with being able to use a different contractor for paving for the non-mas D O T chapter 90 funds and having to do all the, you know, ramp-ups and sidewalks at the same time with those streets, that we might be able to tap them to actually give us a price, because they tend to come in lower, that contractor come in lower than if we did a contract that we do for the chapter 90 money. So we could always ask when they're putting that out to bid, once you approve the money for original roads this year, we could also ask them to look at that road to allow it, we might get a better price.
One thing that I didn't mention, that just occurred to me, that's kind of on the good news front, is that I received an email from Steve Burke, my director of facilities today, and he has really been kind of a wizard in terms of our electricity consumption that's really gone down almost every year. And right now we're tracking 7% below where we were last year. So he's been doing a really masterful job. And I think with the new buildings and with the controls and being able to use a computer to, you know, set them and shut them down and turn them on, that's really made a difference in what we've been able to do across all of the buildings. It's really helped.
Speaking of which, there was some...
Susan, how bad is the elevator at this juncture? I mean, do we, are we at risk for some child being stuck on the second floor with a wheelchair or something?
It's, it's more at risk for not having it work at all, not being able to get a child up to the second floor.
Okay. So I mean, it's really, it's really...
I, I, yes, yes, it's, it's...
So then we should probably, because we have $900,000 left in the school accounts and this was, should have been part of the school project anyway, we just didn't think we had any money.
Right.
Yeah, because we thought we were down to, you know, we were close to the amount that we had budgeted for the school renovation. So we probably should put that money in, can we do a one-time transfer, Charlie? Because we have only one seat, that's what we're committing, same house, meaning left, to be able to approve that funding in one...
Yeah, I think we could do it.
Yes, in a preambles to do this? I'm just really worried something like an elevator in a school is carrying these...
Maybe we do, I don't know.
The general estimate, was that like a state licensing person who sent this, so there's no second opinion on that? It definitely is...
Well, we'd have to go up there.
Yeah, we would have to go up there. I mean, we had G G D come in, and that's where, that's where this estimate came.
How competitive are, is the elevator business?
It doesn't, not at all. I mean, we had a brand new elevator put into the Brezina Hand School that within, what was it, Susan, it was like 14 months?
The bane...
It didn't pass inspection.
They are the bane of any superintendent's existence. They, I have had in my career, I've had more issues with elevators and it is because there are, it is, is so little competition that you're between a rock and a hard place all the time. And you can literally have, you have some work done on the elevator, then the inspector has to come out and they find three more things that you need to repair. And then we go those things and they come back out and they find two more things, and it's, it's...
It's a huge disruption.
It's disruptive.
So how confident are we in that number then?
Well, I think Steve's pretty confident in it.
Okay.
So...
All right, so we have a 140 that was funded last year, so we need 163, 710. Okay. I have the 400.
There's some discrepancy back to that parking lot about solar panels. You going to examine that possibility, remember that? No?
Yes, I do. I'm not sure what happened to that.
Colin Walters is, shouldn't be getting back to me either this week or next week, at the end of the year, so I can't.
So the lighting, that factor, the knock parked light, did, did we replace it during the... We did? Oh, actually, we did a couple. But there was a problem with the conduits and, I mean, there was, those issues with replacing lights, did you ever go through?
And they actually took out, they took out some lights because that was part of the...
Because they were dangerous.
And it was, and, and the scope in the project was quite limited. So we actually lost some lights.
And then again, I think the plan was, why would we pave unless we were going to replace the lights, we have to do that first.
You don't want, you don't want to have to replace it.
Never got there, putting a plan together. I mean, we take one at least from state, which didn't come to last much, I think. But that hurts.
I'm all set, thanks.
Chucking. And we also have questions?
I had a quick question. Since Massachusetts, since Newburyport's a green community and I know there's certain grants awarded, when does that get reflected in terms of the types of projects that the Green Community Grants could be used? Like I know we did daily de-lighting, do they project additional fundings for the next fiscal year?
Every year, it depends on what they actually are allocating. Some years we've received $125,000, last year for the LEDs it was $240,000, I believe. So it really depends on what they decide to put into the communities that aren't green communities in terms of what they'll allocate. And last year was interesting because the governor actually put streetlights as his top priority for funding. So it's hard to know. Those grants usually are due around February, so I'll have a better sense over the next, I would say, you know, three to four weeks in terms of what the Green Communities Act is, you know, has for revenue and what they're going to fund for grants over the coming year. At that point, if there isn't a targeted program, then Molly usually will reach out and ask for suggestions. She usually has a list of 25 things anyway, but she'll usually reach out and ask for, if there's, you know, suggestions on, you know, what would make more sense in terms of the green communities. All right, so I guess motion to adjourn?
So.
All right, all those in favor? Thank you very much, appreciate all your time.